All right, so we'll call to order. Pledge allegiance to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we have a motion on the floor to point me as President Pro Tem?
We need to be roll call first.
Roll call, pardon.
Please. President Thomas and Vice President Everard.
Here.
Treasurer Zimmerman.
President.
Secretary Rosori.
Here.
Christie Lahey.
Yes.
Christie Zurich.
Here.
And Trudy Deller.
Here.
Okay, now we'll entertain a motion from the floor. Back to President Pro Tem.
Motion.
Second by Ron. Take a roll call as well.
Yes, Treasurer Zimmerman.
Yes.
Treasurer Zurich. I'm sorry, trustee Zurich, trustee Lahey.
Yes.
Trustee Deller.
Yes.
Secretary Rosori.
Yes.
And Vice President Everard.
Yes. All right. Conservation ethic, Nora, could you help us out there?
Oh, sure. Conservation ethics, goal number six. To foster a conservation ethic among McHenry County citizens, helping all of us, regardless of the basis of our interest in nature, to develop a greater awareness of our role in and responsibility for the total community of life. Conservation ethic asks us to assume a moral duty to become educated about conservation issues and then act on that information. A conservation ethic is an attitude that recognizes the importance of preserving the natural heritage of the county's open space. Goal number three, to manage its areas in such a manner that archaeological and historical resources are integrated with natural resources for optimal preservation, education, and recreation benefit.
Thank you. And Bonnie, can you help us with that? Five point oh.
Sure. We pledge to make a difference by standing up for our water, wildlife, and way of life in McHenry County. The quality of life in McHenry County depends on healthy and sustainable natural resources, thoughtfully developed cities and towns, a strong economy, and beautiful outdoor places to explore, discover, and recreate. We will help to build a sustainable and vibrant local economy by providing a destination for outdoor recreation experiences.
Thank you. And Michael.
My acknowledgement statement, six point oh. To many indigenous groups in tribal nations, including the Ho'uchonk, Icapu, Dakota, Dakota, Escutin, Miami, Peoria, Otawami, Sauk, Musqueq, McHenry County is part of their traditional homeland. We invite you to join us in offering respect to the indigenous peoples living here today and their ancestors' stewardship of the land. Together, we celebrate these special places, seek to learn, and honor the history of those who've come before us and strive to forgive or meaningful relationships with indigenous communities to deepen our collective connection to land.
Thank you. All right, adopt the agenda. Do you have the agenda on Thursday? A motion to adopt the agenda, only?
I'll make a motion, adopt the agenda as presented.
Second. Senator Vabani.
Secretary Rosori.
Yes.
Trustee Zurich.
Yes.
Treasurer Zimmerman.
Yes.
Trustee Deller.
Yes.
Trustee Lahey.
Yes.
President Pro Tem Everard.
Yes. All right, special recognition, presentation.
All right, well, we have this evening one presentation or one recognition to make, and that is to our Director of Administration of Finance, Andy Diallo, and his team, and our finance accounting, as well as to the board and staff for the great work of collaboration, but really for the leadership there on receiving the certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting for the McHenry County Conservation District for our financial report of the fiscal year that ended March 31st, 2024. So we have received this honor since the district has been submitting through that process here, and just want to commend.
How many years in row is that?
It's been many.
Fourteen.
Yeah, I was here.
Oh, that's great, that's, you know, keep it up, that's, you know, great, yeah. Yeah. All right. Trustees' report. Do you have anything to report on? Any meetings or anything?
It was a nice hike with Mike, it was very pleasant.
Did they escape the rain, did they get it in before? Good, good. And how would you get twenty-some people signed up in advance, right?
We did, it was a record, unfortunately not everybody showed up, because we actually had people on the waitlist that wanted to get into the program, unfortunately. But it was a beautiful day, again, appreciate staff did an awesome job, our planning department and natural resources worked collaboratively. So Sarah Rumel, who was involved with the project, and Peters were there, as well as Elaine, uh, Elise.
Elise.
Elise was there from our Natural Resources Restoration Ecologist and Bonnie Lahey.
And I'm sure Mike's happy, I mean, he's going to be just really looking forward to getting everybody out there, as many as you could get.
Yeah, he's been very supportive, you know, promoting and encouraging, just again leaning into the program. And what's so great about it, it's, it's an opportunity for constituents as well, just to have some one-on-one time, but also to learn, and I think it's done an excellent job of sharing really what goes into maintaining and managing our conservation areas and how they're so uniquely different, but what's necessary to make them thrive, and it's been awesome. So he's very interested in continuing, and that's why we have a whole series for the spring going into summer, and I'm sure we'll continue to look at.
Do you get the sense that it's drawing people out that haven't been a part of the district before, aren't more there for him, or is it pretty much our regulars are just coming to?
We have some followers that regularly have not been to each of these different sites, so they're looking to experience and learn more, but each area we do get a few more people that are not familiar. So it's a mixture.
Okay, great.
I guess I've never gone on a hike, but why do we limit it? The twenty, or just because it, the crowd would get too big and you couldn't hear Mike, or?
Um, well, no, we just want to know who's coming, just so there's a good attendance wise. If you get too many, particularly on a certain site, for example, at Bogart, the parking lot has a footprint of about five cars. We made arrangements for parking. The team did it down with the village of the valley, Sticking House, but I think if it's too large, you know, but again, we've been very flexible. People have attended that haven't registered and don't turn.
Let's check and report on the foundation meeting early this month, and you know, it was, we had to reschedule the joint meeting, we still, you know, they still want to do that, we still want to do that, so we will have rescheduled meeting, you know, all get together. I think the biggest thing on their agenda right now is, as they're coming into the new fiscal year, is they're really looking for us to give them, what's the next big project for them to rally around, to go out to their donors. It's hard right now to just say, you know, well, like, you know, it's a good cause, it's for, you know, water and clean air, that's been our mantra, you know, but to really get people to open up their wallets, if there's something they can identify with, that's going to help a lot, so they're, they're just kind of on standby, I think, waiting for us to say something. So I think those presentations last week are, you know, will keep some interest if we can get that in front of them.
So what have? We'll go on to public comments.
The liaison report.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, liaison.
Yeah.
County Board Liaison, we went right past the ten point oh. You should add leave.
So last week, we did, as a board, approve for the morgue to be basically construction new, it hasn't been overhauled since nineteen eighty-six. So it's, it's going to be a big project, it's in budget, but about $2 million overall. So it's something that we're looking forward to as a county, I know the coroner has been pushing for it. So that's a big thing that's going on right now. Tomorrow, we, for our strategic planning for McHenry County, and I'll bring you some more information on that, we have a workshop tomorrow. Basically, all day event. What we're going to look like in 2050 is what they're, you know, what our growth rate, what kind of farms, you know, land, and so they're trying to keep everything the way it is now. And so it's going to be interesting, it's my first time, so I don't have much to offer you right now, but hopefully on the next one, I'll inform you on that. So.
Interesting, thank you. All right. Now, public comments?
I'm not seeing any raised hands online.
Okay, thank you. All right, go to consent agenda, so first approval for the minutes for the previous meeting.
So our secretary is going to read through, I guess, I'll read through and make a motion, and so once he reads, we'll get a second.
Thirteen point oh, for business consent agenda, thirteen point one, approval of minutes of previous meetings. Thirteen point one A, February twentieth, two thousand twenty-five, committee of the whole executive session. Thirteen point one B, March twentieth, two thousand twenty-five, committee of the whole. Thirteen point one C, March twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-five, regular meeting. Thirteen point two A, acceptance of treasurer's report for March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five, as presented. Thirteen point two B, acceptance of investment report for quarter four fiscal year two twenty-five, as presented. Thirteen point three, resolution number twenty-five dash twenty-five, ratifying participation in the combat powering safe communities grant opportunity. Thirteen point four, resolution number twenty-five dash twenty-six, authorizing the purchase of one utility loader through Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Organization for a cost not to exceed ninety thousand dollars. Thirteen point five, resolution twenty-five dash twenty-seven, authorizing the disposable of listed fixed assets through a public online auction with open off auction services incorporated of Round Lake at no cost to the district. Resolution number twenty-five dash twenty-eight, awarding a contract to Esco LLC of Lake Zurich, Illinois, lowest response, well, and responsive bidder for the upgrade and replacement of the fire alarm system in the Lost Valley Visitor Center for a cost not to exceed one hundred twenty-one thousand, one hundred twenty-one dollars and forty-seven cents. Thirteen point seven, resolution number twenty-five dash twenty-nine, authorizing the executive director to execute a professional service agreement with Guide Studio Incorporated of Cleveland, Ohio for the Prairie Trail Wayfinding, signage, cleaning project for a cost not to exceed one hundred ninety-four thousand, five hundred dollars. Thirteen point eight, resolution number twenty-five thirty, ratifying the executive director's execution of change order number two in the amount of two thousand with Copper Haven Construction Incorporated of Gilberts, Illinois, for the Hollows Lake Atwood Improvement Project for the work to relocate the new fishing pier, which is part of the Hollow Lake Atwood Access Project. Thirteen point nine, authorizing the purchase of two replacement vehicles from purchasing bid contracts and to prepare specifications and let bid for one replacement vehicle. Thirteen point nine A, resolution twenty-five dash thirty-one, authorizing the purchase of one replacement vehicle. Chrysler Pacifica through McHenry County Bid Purchase Contract for a cost not to exceed forty-three thousand. Resolution number twenty-five dash thirty-two, authorizing the purchase of one replacement vehicle for one-ton dump truck through Illinois State Joint Purchasing Master Contract for a cost not to exceed one hundred thousand dollars. Thirteen point nine C, authorization to prepare specifications and let bids for the purchase of one replacement vehicle Dodge Ram thirty-five hundred pickup truck or the equivalent for a cost not to exceed eighty-two thousand dollars. Orders number twenty-five dash one oh six oh, adopting the administrative directives for recreational hunting on the Henry County Conservation District lands for the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six Illinois hunting season as presented. Resolution number twenty-five dash thirty-three, authorizing the purchase of herbicides through the Illinois State Joint Purchase Master Contract awarded to Nutrient and Solutions Incorporated. Thirteen point one two, resolution number twenty-five dash thirty-four, adopting a fiscal year legislative program as presented. Thirteen point one three, resolution number twenty-five dash thirty-five, authorizing the executive director to provide a letter of support for the Northern Rain Wastewater Reclamation District applications for fiscal two thousand twenty-six congressional aid directed spending for the Illinois nutrient trading program. Second. Moving now, seconded. Towards to adopt these agendas, this agenda and through these motions. Any discussion on any of the elements of that?
Just one quick, I know we talked about last week, just the signage program, that Wayfair signage, just because of the cost, if we could just kind of admit it on that before for the plan of the city, that was, uh.
Thirteen point seven, yeah. Just describe that again, please.
So this is a grant that was received by the district. We worked collaboratively with the McHenry County Division of Transportation and naturally McHenry County Sign and Support. This will provide a plan to design wayfinding directional signage along the Prairie Trail, which has been something that has been envisioned for quite some time, but it will get you the plan. And then from that plan, then we'll be able to send it out or go through the budgetary process, find funding to do the development, the execution of.
And I know that on the Prairie Trail by Algonquin, if there was a little, some signs there was actually a little trail that kind of goes off and says, you know, there's a restaurant over here, and, you know, people are looking for restrooms and whatnot, it's nice little, but, but we want it to all tie in, it'll all match.
We need our own branding that works through with all the municipalities as we go through the system, and so kind of working, that'll be part of the process. It's working with their individual directional signage, so Algonquin, you'll see it in McHenry, you'll see it in Richmond, and then building that existing identity.
And it's from a grant.
It's from a grant. And that's been John's team, planning and development department that's leading that.
Questions, comments on any other items? If not, go ahead. We're to go. Christie?
Trustee Deller.
Yes.
Trustee Lahey.
Yes.
Trustee Zurich.
Yes.
Treasurer Zimmerman.
Yes.
Secretary Rosori.
Yes.
President Pro Tem Everard.
Yes. Fifteen point oh. And Treasurer's internal report?
Yeah, so the internal audit, I just want to bring up something to the board. So usually when I pull the, pull the audit, is that the way it usually does is it's, you know, after I get the board pack, I'll look at the items, I'll submit it, and they'll provide support, but the support usually comes in like closer to the next meeting, which is fine. We did get support in this board packet for February's items that I pulled, and one of the items that I had pulled in February was for office furniture in the amount of six thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars, and the support was provided in the board packet, you can see it there, it's fourteen point one A, you know, fourteen point one A one. And there is a document in there that's the purchase requisition, and it does state in here, per the policy of the district is any amounts over five thousand dollars must have three written quotes. So when I read through the board packet, I just requested through Elizabeth those three written quotes, because it was over five thousand for their policy, and you can see, did you, did everyone get a response?
I sent an email this afternoon, get that, and copies for yourself.
Yeah. So we did get a response from the districts about that. Actually, Elizabeth, I'll lean to you to explain, and then we can have a discussion after that explanation.
Absolutely. So within, if there is a sole source that we're working through, we can leave the multiple votes, but I'll back it up a little bit. In two thousand thirteen, the district went through the American with Disabilities Audit here at Brookdale and Prairie View. Lost Valley Visitor Center, of course, when we redesigned, one of the key things within our facilities is we had soup to nuts, I mean, furniture not matching, mixed matched or whatever. And so with that, one of the things was to be able to get a standardization. So we worked out, we went out and had engaged to evaluate with ROI, and they did both Prairie View and Brookdale. Unfortunately, the finances of implementing the full movement of every office of having furniture was possible. And so we chose not to do that, and as time allotted through budgetary processes, we go through and we updated different offices. So, example, our planning department this year was done. Chief was this latest one, Christie's office was done last year, my office has not been done. The directors' offices were like last on the list, but we have not moved those spaces, but we've gone to those other areas. So because of the facility, the designs, it's not just something you prefer, they're units, right, but they all match with a particular color, so we can have a consistent look when we're done. It looks like it's, it belongs in one family versus back to what it currently is with the older furniture. My office furniture matches the directors' and parking, but trying to move towards it. So with that, we've gone out and we've used them to get going into the pricing and set up the office, and they customize based on what's needed to install. So that's, that's what we've done, and it's a sole source, because they manufacture, they work on all the unevenness and what we have in older buildings, it's not just straightforward, so.
Yeah. So, I don't know, just to the board, you know, I, I would, I would suggest to the district in the future that through the notes section there, it does just say sole source, custom work. I think that explanation doesn't provide enough, the reason, I mean, that is directly under three quotes must in bold be obtained. So I just, I think for the district's purpose that it's a small amount, it's insignificant, I mean, we'll just put that that way, we're not talking hundred thousand dollars, right? But we are talking office furniture, and it is for a specific person. So I think that, I think it, the district to just make a little extra note in there, it doesn't have to be a long explanation, but I think, I think it go a long way that if this was ever pulled for any reason, that, that, um, there could be a question about why there was.
And maybe back in there, when the project first started, was there three, three bids then, and this, this guy came up as the only one, and just continued.
Yeah, swear, but ninety-five percent confident that that was part of the project, so that's why they're going back to that vendor, because those plans still.
Yep, that would be. I feel better if it started that way, you know, and we went three, and this guy ended up being the best bid, and we went forward with that, with them from that point out.
That's where you got comment, I support it, so.
Yeah.
And we're usually trying to do that. So.
Yep. Sure, that's the only comment I have, otherwise.
Okay, duly noted, thank you. And a comments question?
So we'll move on to March's, I did pull three items for March. Invoice S nine three two two for Safari Micro Incorporated, an amount of seventy thousand, six hundred and sixty-three dollars and thirty-eight cents. Invoice zero eight two three nine Ford Space, Hostile Visitor Center Nursing Room Furniture in the amount of eight thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars and fifty cents. Henry City Stoneville Association, eleven thousand, three hundred and sixty-six dollars and ninety-eight cents. Those three items I pulled from March, I know, I've known I've spoken on this before, you know, there's two ways you can go about sometimes doing this internal audit, right? I could do, I can just put a bunch of numbers on, on every single transaction and just do a random sample. But there's so many low numbers that I wouldn't want to waste the district's time if a random number came up and it was for like five bucks. So generally, I'll try to choose the larger items, kind of like you saw last month, with furniture, just to make sure that the documentation's in place, signatures are in place, and those types of things. Otherwise, it's just called a judgmental selection, I just, like anyone would just use your judgment, show something. Now, sometimes it may just be maybe a vendor I haven't seen before on the list, we question that. Where, you know, this is the first time we've maybe used a vendor, so just, just some background information, I, you know, I've, I've been questioned just kindly of, you know, how do I make the choices, or how do I make that selection, that's just a little tidbit.
And I will say too, I think it's awesome, and I think if you started this process, you would have received through our auditor kind of looking for those to pull, and I think it's really important that there's another look that we're managing all of that. Even on that voucher, I will say, I sent in, yeah, I regularly go through as well, and I'll point out certain things, and particularly end of the year, if I see things going towards our total over purchasing threshold, that, again, for concern of chaining or any type of that, to make sure that that, and verify and make sure that all that, so there's a lot of different eyes from different perspectives, and the directors are doing the same thing on their oversight. So again, there's multiple ways that we're looking at things, and I applaud continued effort to do.
Okay, so we'll look at those next month, next meeting then, those will be reviewed.
Those will be, right, so they're pulled this month, we pull it in next month's paper.
Fourteen point one B, make a motion to approve the payment of bills as indicated on a submission of bills pending report for the month ending March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, just a second.
Second.
Bonnie, seconded.
Trustee Deller.
Yes.
Trustee Zurich.
Yes.
Secretary Rosori.
Yes.
Treasurer Zimmerman.
Yes.
Trustee Lahey.
Yes.
President Pro Tem Everard.
Yes. All right, I'm sure about the collective bargaining agreement of the local one fifty.
Well, that's all executed, we talked about it in executive session, and we're good to go, so.
We didn't, we don't need to vote on anything?
Well, you don't need to vote, somebody needs to make a motion, yes.
We have to accept the bargaining package as negotiated.
Do you read the portions underneath, fourteen point two, the consideration of motion?
Ah, yes, okay, here we go, consideration of motion adopting resolution number twenty-five dash thirty-six, authorizing the execution of collective bargaining agreement between the International Union of Operating Engineers, Local One Fifty Public Employees Division, and in McHenry County Conservation District, number one twenty-five through March thirty-one of twenty-eight. Okay?
Some.
Some move. Vabani, seconded by Ron. Roll call.
Trustee Zurich.
Yes.
Trustee Lahey.
Yes.
Treasurer Zimmerman.
Yes.
Uh, trustee Deller.
Yes.
Secretary Rosori.
Yes.
President Pro Tem Everard.
Yes. Right, the employment agreement, consideration for motion adopting resolution number twenty-five thirty-seven, approving an employment agreement with Elizabeth S. Kessler for the term of July one, May five, through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight. Motion, I'll make that. Second?
Second.
My mic? Okay.
Treasurer Zimmerman.
Yes.
Trustee Deller.
Yes.
Trustee Lahey.
Yes.
Trustee Zurich.
Yes.
Secretary Rosori.
Yes.
President Pro Tem Everard.
Yes. All right, and lastly, consideration of the motion to pass ordinance number twenty-five dash one zero six one, authorizing the execution the real estate sale contract for the purchase of the McHenry County Conservation Foundation twenty twenty-five Marengo Ridge Transfer Parcel and the acquisition of real property according to its terms. Motion? Motion, Iran? Second? Favor?
Trustee Zurich.
Yes.
Sean?
Secretary. Secretary Rosori.
Yes.
Treasurer Zimmerman.
Yes.
Trustee Deller.
Yes.
Trustee Lahey.
Yes.
And President Pro Tem Everard.
Yes. Sure. All right, executive director's report, Elizabeth, what you got?
All right, well, Happy Earth Day, everyone, today is Earth Day, so great to see the purchase for ten dollars from the the foundation on a piece of property that will be held in two weeks, so what a great way to celebrate Earth Day, that transaction.
They have a hard bargain.
Place. So we appreciate all the great work that the foundation does in supporting that, as well as everyone that came out. We mentioned hike with Mike, but we also had our Earth Day at Prairie View, and then there was a lot of seating activities this weekend during holiday week, but ultimately, a great event in that we had a lot of our partners that were present there, you know, vending, sharing of information, and we'll sponsor that with Environmental Defenders. And the Environmental Defenders is also having their annual gathering this Sunday, their annual dinner and meeting at the Red Tail Golf Club, so I don't know if anybody's planning to attend, I won't be there, but that's from three to seven Sunday. The other news to share with everyone is we've been working, is our trips in Washington DC on the Congressional Project funding, or the program funding, as they call it, and followed up, we were invited to, since two thousand twenty-five, did not occur fiscal year because they did a continuation with the fiscal year two thousand twenty-four budget. We were asked by Congressman Schneider to go ahead and put in for, really, to continue on with what he had agreed as one of his projects, Silver Creek Habitat Restoration Blood Mitigation Project for three hundred thousand, so we were pulling all that together and submitting it. And also with Congresswoman Chakowsky's office for the Fox Bluff Conservation Area for Access, spoke with their office. And also with Congresswoman Jakowski's office for the Fox Bluff Conservation Area for Access, spoke with their office and they are automatically putting all their projects forward that didn't. So um, one thing they did state on that, to account for inflation. And so what we had requested initially was three point six, so we're working on making some adjustments and we will re-submit that as well. And she's just gonna, I don't know, she's just gonna, so um, we'll keep you apprised, but um, very much interested in seeing.
Right. Public comments? Any on the, on the line?
I'm not seeing any raised hands online.
Right, well, then, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Oh, I have one more. So let me ask this, for the the trustees, as you know, at the county board, they're going through um, the interview process uh, for our trustees. And I would say if there is any questions or things that I guess I'll provide a gap analysis to them, but if there's any specific questions that the board has that you would like to have them pass script and sit there through the process to let me know and then I will, I will send that over.
You have what, seven applicants, I think?
Uh, six now.
Six?
One is, one is withdrawn, one is. So.
And that, and that Tuesday, first Tuesday of?
First Tuesday in May in the planning, environment and development, so.
Yes, yep.
Which our liaison, Paul Thomas, sits on there.
Yeah, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to tend that there as well, so.
They're interesting, they're good.
Will you attend just as part of the public?
Yeah, yeah.
Like their interview, yeah.
Yeah, and they may ask many a times, they may ask trustees as they do through deliberation, just to, you know, again, there may be questions that come up about the district and then.
I think experience in the transition of leadership, so.
They were experiencing transition of leadership.
One of the things, you know, Bonnie, that's a great point that I like about this this group, that it's very well balanced and I come and I learn, so, or when I hear you speak, that legal perspective or away from HR and Sean and everybody else. So I don't know if there's a knowledge base, if someone had it, that perhaps we would be able to leverage that we, we don't have. They don't give that answer, but.
This person will be second year of the new executive leadership person.
Yeah.
And uh, it's so important for somebody who's, doesn't have a narrow-based agenda.
Right.
That is conceived more of a corporate broad-based agenda, because we're, new leadership will be dealing with municipalities, government bodies and there could easily be missteps just because of the nature of somebody just new into that position.
So somebody who knows how to kind of navigate through those type of corridors.
Yes, I mean.
Yeah, I would have no idea myself.
I mean, it's not necessarily that there would be missteps, but just in case, or just provide advice.
Sure.
To, to the new leadership too, like you need somebody strong. I also, at that point in time, believe, uh, you know, even the liaison would be important at that time.
Sure.
And also, uh, we keep our present, uh, county board president, helpful to the stability.
Yeah.
We, we need things as stable as possible for that time.
Oh, I knew it, we'll get the memo out as to the time and everything, but you know, it's that, I think it's that first Tuesday of next month, so. When it had, was it nine o'clock or something, do we know when it's?
Um, yeah, they'll post the agenda, I believe they start at eight thirty.
I was gonna say, I think it's eight thirty.
And then they'll do interviews usually first, but I don't know what the agenda looks like, but I know they're scheduling all of that, that's what they want.
Yeah, I haven't, I haven't received mine yet, so.
It'd just be like you going to them.
Yeah, but I think anybody could go, because it isn't.
It's like an interview.
Yeah.
At the end of the day, yeah, sometimes.
And one year, I did it twice, one year, they had the interviewees come in one at a time, the candidates came in one at a time and left in another. The other time, everybody heard everybody else's, which was just odd, I really.
It just happened last week, the same way.
Same way with the.
That just seems really.
They were actually sitting next to each other, debating, yeah.
Because it's open meetings act, so it's open.
Yeah.
And they're recorded as well, so whether you're in person or you're streaming, I mean, you still can.
Yeah, but from the perspective of the candidate, it just seems odd.
No, there's the perspective of. You know, he said that, I better say.
It's so funny, because it was Nora, Mike and I who were sitting.
I remember that, yeah, and yeah, they do, they march in one at a time and you don't really realize you're, you know, sitting in this hot seat and there's a camera.
There's an audience.
Yeah, well, I mean, the audience isn't bad, but it's the camera, you're like, oh, where are you?
All right, a- anything else? What were you adjourned on this earth face? All right, entertaining a motion to adjourns.
Like a motion?
Okay.
Moving seconded.
Got it.
John and Mark, all right.
Hey, trustee Lady.
Yes.
Trustee Derek.
Yes.
Treasurer Zimmerman.
Yes.
Secretary Ronsor.
Yes.
Trustee Deller.
Yes.
President Portimeverar.
Yes, adjourned.
I agree.